Okay, awesome. It is 4:04 and this is the Lake County Planning Commission meeting joint with Leadville Planning Commission. I'm going to do roll call quick of Lake County Planning Commission members. Heather Lind here, Howard Tripp. Can Zoom hear us up there?
Here.
Okay, perfect. And Abby Dolan here. Bryce Erlich.
Here.
And Lupe Bobidia.
Here.
Great, thank you.
No mustache.
Your mustache is missing. You lost it. Leadville Planning Commission, I have Gabby Bowler here, Scott Bauer.
Here.
And Mary Lott.
Here.
County Commissioners, Commissioner Mudge.
Here.
Commissioner Marcela. And Commissioner Fiedler.
Here.
Thank you. Any changes or addition requests to the agenda? Okay.
I have one thought and I'm sorry. I wondered Bryce has a mapping tool that he's developing and I didn't know we wanted to maybe make that together on the time plan and it's a constant work in progress, but like we were looking.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think we kind of talked about doing that and I probably forgot about that. So that's a great idea. So maybe we'll move that in after the, right before it will business. Okay. We have County Planning, County Planning Commission minutes from September 13th and September 27th. Has everybody had a chance to review those? Can I get a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes from September 13th and 27th meetings.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I wasn't here for the 27th, sorry, but I think we have enough folks regardless.
Okay, Lupe, were you here on the 27th?
Not, I wasn't here on the 27th as well.
The three of us can do that though. So let's do motion first on the 13th. Is everybody present for the 13th?
Yes.
Can I get a all in favor passing motion for September 13th minutes? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, and September 27th, that would be Bryce, Howard and I. Same motion and all in favor of passing on the 27th.
Aye.
Okay, we have new business on collaboration over joint community projects and goals with the city and their planning commission. And put together a little list of things, of some talking points, just on conversations that I think we've all had in the past. Maybe informally on things that we can talk about. And I don't know if anybody has a priority goal on some of these items that Anne brought up here as far as what we talk about first, but or we can just go down the list. Kind of just keep it open, informal discussion.
Sure, I mean, maybe we can start by giving each of the commissions an update to each other about kind of what you've been working on this year and kind of how the year's been and what you've not completed that you wanted to complete. I can go first with the city. So the first half of the year, we were pretty caught up in the short-term rental licensing and permit process. And we had high hopes of making some comprehensive plan updates. But I think there was a little bit of burnout after the STR process and then we have a bunch of commissioners who have moved away and so our ranks have diminished a little bit and we've lost a little bit of steam in the last month or two. So that's one of the reasons I reached out to the county so that, you know, even if we have a smaller commission for the rest of the year, maybe our goal is to work on some joint issues. The other thing we did, and maybe I'll hand it to Scott for this, is because Scott really led the way on this, is we had a parking, downtown parking plan update, which was a consultant-led effort for the city. And so that was a big action item for the year too. Scott, do you have anything else you want to contribute about kind of what we've been up to?
I think, you know, just being able to have the consultants come in and actually, you know, produce that report in such a short timeframe was really extraordinary. I'm not quite sure where that's all, what's all happened as a result of that. And I guess in terms of the city council and all that, I guess I'm still looking for some clarification in terms of, I'm sure there's still some discussion and going on around all that, but I guess it's still part of the conversation.
It is part of the conversation. Obviously, we would, pretty quickly went forward with with the parking permit program we did over the, as of December 31st. We won't actually pick up sides until April 30th. We were hoping to have some sort of neighborhood parking plan, purchase permit system plan. But the family is very narrow right now. So we, I don't know that we're going to have a plan for it. That it's going to be a little bit of all devising a plan that we think will work. And it does what we want to accomplish without, without trying to fix things in our apartment. So I don't have really high hopes for that in the next itself.
So the thing that I really had high hopes for was the snow removal aspect of it. And I'm not sure where we're at with that. There's some talk of coordinating with county and city to actually address.
We've already been doing that. I don't think there was a lot of, the main thing we need, and it's part of a discussion going on right now with the street department, we need a snowboard. And we need one that's, that's better than the one the county has. The county has one that they got and they put a lot of money into it. But it's not very reliable because it's an hogger style snowboard. And we need to buy a rabbit style for $260,000. It's not cheap. So that's, that's one thing it's going to take. The other thing it's going to take is then as part of that, we have to have a plan to get people to move their vehicles in order to remove snow because that's definitely the number one problem. So everything else fails by comparison. Cars parked on the street are a showstopper. So those two things, you know, those two things I think we've accomplished in fairly short order, but.
I think that would be a great step forward in terms of city management during the winter months.
The city is kind of been working very hard together. As a matter of fact, right now, we have our our city crews out there almost every day for about four, five days, supporting the county's effort to get happen and done. And we're also helping putting some of our crew members on their baby project. So there's been a lot of cooperation.
That's, that's excellent. Guess that's where we're at.
Greg, is there anything else you want to add of like kind of year, what we've been working on this year?
Short-term rules was the eight mile car rule, which it really was. You're right. It took a great deal of effort. The PUD would move smoothly this time than the last time. So I think we have a reason to be very pleased with, with that. But those things are really dog years.
Yeah, there's one other effort that we're about halfway through is that we have some updates that we'd like to make to the zoning table of like what, how many units are allowed in different zone and that basically is to address some issues that have come up in different development applications of whether an ADU counts towards a unit of density or not. And I don't know if you, anyone remembers that conversation from last summer? And we decided it does. And so then a lot of neighborhoods are already way denser than what's currently allowed. And so we had help from the Policy Action or Policy Advisory Committee to do some analysis and our goal was basically to try to allow either a duplex or a single-family home and an ADU on as many lots in Leadville as we could fit. And so, and that ended up being a little bit of density changes, a little bit of site coverage changes, a little bit of setback changes. It was, it was a mix of lots of little changes to basically get to the point where it's like 90% of lots can fit two units.
Right. To that point, the Policy Advisory Team, you know, we've, we've always defined density by acre.
Right. And that doesn't really make sense.
As you know, it doesn't make any sense at all. It's very difficult for, to a site type review of any kind of home, especially an ADU based on that. However, the Policy Advisory Team has a policy in place which we will, I hope, which basically bases it on lots. And, and, and then that would be defiable and will actually allow, you know, either duplexes or.
Right. You don't have to do that, but it allows the flexibility for that. I think that was the ultimate goal. So that's partway through, hasn't gone as an official ordinance yet.
We'll get on right now. We have given our city attorney a long list.
I know. I know.
There are probably about 12 of them.
Right. But the list that Anne put together, the comprehensive plan, three-mile plan in housing, I think that's such an, I mean, it's, we could talk about each of those topics for two hours. But the, some of the things that come to mind is that a lot of these applications come through, they rely on the comprehensive plan with the criteria. And I think some of those criteria seem a little bit out of date. And then with the three-mile plan, there's a lot of applications going in for interesting developments right at the gateway areas where the city border is, you know, on the north side and the south side. And so I think that's a really important area of joint planning. And then I, as we know, housing is just everything you can do to fix the housing situation, you know, that's an all, all hands effort. So I'd be curious to hear, you know, what, what the county's been working on and, or your reactions to anything that we've mentioned.
Yeah, for sure. I think similarly, we have, our, our plate has mostly been dominated with our back country zone change proposal or creation, I should say, proposal, which hopefully we're in the home stretch of getting that to public hearing by the end of the year. That's taken a lot. And then I think it's funny, I feel like this happens every year in the summer. You just never get anything done. I just feel like nobody ever gets anything done in the summer, but it's just hard to keep people engaged and they're not, you know, already super burnt out from work and everything else. And so you, I just feel like we've had a hard time keeping our momentum going also as far as getting things done outside of meetings and then getting into them. So hopefully we're in this shoulder season, we can put a little bit more effort into really pushing back country to the end there. I think on our plate was a good look at the comp plan. I don't know that we've necessarily run into very many issues where the comp plan has not been where we, where we've found some too many issues of it being outdated. I think there have been a couple of issues where we've gone in and we've re rephrased a few things to make sure that it was a little bit more clear so that it wasn't so much ambiguity to it. But you have the the one thing that we were seeing a lot more of, which I think for, for the county is way more outdated than the comp plan is our zoning map and our idea of what future zoning should be. So we'll get a subdivision application and it seems like the whole community comes in and says, we don't want that there. And it's like, well, our future use map says we do. So we clearly need to be looking back at some of these and saying, okay, community, what do we need to adjust here? And what do we see now that especially we're in this super quick? I mean, we're all behind the ball at this point, but we're in this very fast growth trajectory with Leadville. I think it's really important now to kind of prioritize what needs updated first. And to me, that's a big one for us is really deciding where in our community we want to really preserve more open space and more recreation and where we want to say, yes, this is prime for development and/or prime for encouraging and incentivizing that development to happen the way we want it. So that's, I think, been kind of on our radars, some things we've talked about over, over time. You know, I'm on the Policy Advisory Team. There's not a whole lot policy-wise that I think that the county can do to help with housing so much just because utility infrastructure, you know, supersedes that for us way more than our zoning. I think our zoning is pretty loose to allow, allow those kind of developments with the PUD process. It's really just the infrastructure and the cost of such makes it fairly undoable. So if only we were in charge of utility infrastructure, that would be great. But yeah, and I don't know Bryce and other members up there on Zoom, if anybody has anything additional they'd like to add.
I can just, just real quick to add to, to make sure that this, the first, no, not, but in 18, we did do a comprehensive plan amendment to the county councilman that spoke to, we added in a lot of the strategies from the housing needs assessment. We did a resolution that year and we did to support, to lead the city to support the housing needs assessment that EPS did. But we did further do a comprehensive plan amendment in 2018 to just put an emphasis on affordable housing goals and strategies as well as put more explicit language into the east side of industrial mine zoned properties and rezoning them to residential use. That may be a different discussion as we talk about the three mile plan and extensions of services. But those were the two areas of the comp plan that we were more additional and specific to 18. So I'm happy to share that resolution. So I think there might be some numbers of the thing that should be on board numbers number two. So I'm happy to get that out.
Anne, tell me what a three mile plan is. Concentric around the city.
Correct. Right, right. It's for a group around the city where extension of infrastructure is possible and typically we would see a possibility of an extension. And also, I think really where we want to drive the highest densities and probably maybe look at some of our affordable housing strategies and goals within that area.
And it's required by state law to have a three-mile plan. Yeah.
So do we have that in text somewhere?
Yeah, it should be. It's usually an attachment to the plan.
So it's a requirement, it's a municipal requirement.
It's not a county requirement, but basically it's an area where although it's in county jurisdiction, it's an area of joint planning where the city should have coordination and, you know, influence over what happens in that area.
And when was that put together?
2015. Have you not seen the map of that yet?
I haven't seen anything on the three mile plan. It's kind of in this like
Okay.
kind of flying blind. I'd like to see more, yeah.
Yeah, should we at some point throw it up on the screen?
Sure.
I mean, just to get acquainted with it? As soon as we finish with kind of, maybe let's finish general comments. It should be on the website is my get, I mean, it should be. It shouldn't be that hard to find. It's a public topic.
I honestly can't remember if it's just a map or if it's a
It's just a map.
A long narrative, which is what I think will be really helpful for us collaboratively to evolve and develop together, like you're saying, like actual strategies for a three-month plan that help benefit both jurisdictions to, towards the goals, to the, towards the shared goals of housing and commercial development.
Right. For example, like the annexation of rail yards is not on there. So that needs, I mean, at the very least, that needs to be updated. And then with rail yards being developed, does that change what the intentions are for the north side of town? Maybe, you know? So I think there's a lot, a lot.
2015, yeah, I think it was 2016.
Right.
Yep.
And do you think it's a map of the city's comp plan and just?
Okay.
Do you know off the top of your head what consulting agency did that?
It was RPI.
It was RPI. I'm in contact with RPI now to get the original comp plan data from like 2011. I think he started putting it together in 2015. He was done. But it's never really been given to the county as a nice shake file. So.
Okay. Abby submitted a chat comment.
I did not see that.
Yeah, so by this week I should have the digital version of the comp plan mapping, which would be nice to overlay with everything. And then it'd be nice to get this as well. So we can just put it on one.
In 2013, I'm not sure we could have dealt with the shake file.
Lori, can you read Abby's comment out loud? I can't read.
It is, I think it's.
It was just the link to the three mile.
Great, okay.
I mean, I can pull that up instead.
Well, let's finish general comments and then maybe we dive into that. I mean, I'm open to. Any other comments from the Zoom crew?
No, I'm, thanks Heather for updating. I think I can only claim being new for so long, but, but this is, this is helpful just to have the conversation. I think, I, I agree. I think three-mile planning is could be a really great opportunity for us. Go ahead.
If I could, this is Sarah for those on Zoom, getting your marriage.
Yep.
All right. So I'd like to update, not just on specific planning mission goals, but the, some of the other things that the board has been involved in, in engagement with SKED. I know that that's been a conversation between the county and the city, the Southern Colorado Economic Development District with Michael and, and we have a scope of work with him to help us through certain housing strategies towards the end goal of receiving DOLA planning grand dollars and implementation dollars next year in November. But a lot of that will, will be looking at county parcels and other highlighted parcels for entitlement work to clean those up so that we can actually put in place a lot of these programs that we've had as ideas kind of floating around for a while. As many of you also know, we're doing wildfire protection planning and rec master planning, which I think could be some good incorporations into comp planning and all, maybe all of those things can be incorporated even into that three-mile planning or further coordination with the city in licensing and permitting and and commercial use for record packs and/or how we might manage and at least today see how capable we are with capacity to address a lot of those issues or topics that we're seeing come to pass and come across our plates. On other probably things that the city might not be so interested in, we have a lot of road issues in new folks moving into the county and closing off what they think is their private drive or claiming that county roads are not hilly roads. And so we are really diving a bit into that to be sure that we try to revise any documentation and language so that we can kind of thwart any further issues regarding county road use and public access. So I think that's all I have there.
That's really good to hear, Sarah, because I, you know, just bopping around biking and driving places. Sometimes I'm like, is that public? Is that private? I'm looking at like four different map apps and I'm like, it looks public, but there's a sign and
Yeah.
So I'm really glad to hear that you're.
People will close access if they give it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just so important for everyone to have recreational access to all of the great places you can go.
I really think it's a fire remediation. Being able to have access is super important. So kind of, yeah, kind of top priority.
I would like to make a comment, I've said this with politicians before. You know, they talk about the three-month plan and the reference to annexation. I've had the last years, two different developers come to me and ask if we would annex, you know, their property because they don't have control. They, they would like to see that. And I said, you don't have to go talk to the county. These are in county. And I said, if the county and city agree that that's in the best interest of the community, then we'll consider it. Otherwise, I said, we have no interest. And that's my, that's my take on it. I'm not interested in it in any way unless it's in the best interest of voters, of the city and county to do that. So.
Well, I think like the tip and inclusion in the URA is separate, is then another step, another step to be included or annexed into the city. But I think the conversations that we'll have that Michael asked, that will help us talk through our, you know, we're seeing a lot of question about density. And if there's a three-mile plan where you naturally annex into the city, which should naturally as a municipality have higher density regulations and allowances, then it's not this conflict where we have existing subdivisions. I mean, it might actually physically really be the same adation, adjacent issue maybe, but it's, it's, it's under a different jurisdiction that has a slightly different set of regulation that has a different expectation for increased density, which might make life a little easier.
Right. But I also worry, so like the city and the county right now are diverged on STR policy. And, you know, there could be other policies that diverge over time, whether that's inclusionary zoning or whatever it is, which may, might make it more attractive to stay in the county or be in the city. Let's say they can get much higher densities in the city if they annex in, but they could, they could command higher prices or allow more STR permits or whatever if they're in their county. There's kind of this competing game of like, should I stay in the county? Should I be in the city? That maybe we don't want to get into and really think, I don't know. I'm just like thinking aloud. Right, you're a good pop back.
But I also think that that's the natural, that's the natural order, right? And I think that's the case in most, most municipalities and counties. It's exactly for that reason. And if the idea is that in a city where the density is higher and the impact is greater for those types of things, then that's your give and take. You want to go into the city where you have higher density. Well, your impact for STR is as much higher, so therefore you don't have them. You know, like that, I feel like it's always got to, I don't think we want to align.
Right, right. But I guess, yeah. I think the question is, in our three-mile plan, where is that line? Where, because I think if you build too suburban style or too rural style, too close in, then you hem yourselves in. And then you don't have room to have those higher density neighborhoods right on the edges where it might be appropriate, like rail yards. Like rail yards is such a great location for a high-density neighborhood. But we have some somewhat rural development right outside the city limits and that you can't really build to those densities. Does that make sense? So I don't know. I think that's why the three-mile plan is such a good tool is we can decide together what we think that appropriate kind of grading down of density and where that should be.
And this is Abby, just really quick. And I think that's, it just begs to be reviewed and updated. I think if it's only five or six years old now, then I think it's a good time to look at it again. And then just making sure that these conversations are iterative going forward. Just so that for those exact reasons, that context can, can continue to be taken into account just as things continue to change.
Yeah, I think we're, we're in such a unique community and that the city itself is only one square mile and then you're creating a three-mile plan around it.
I know, I know. It's very, a very odd tool.
I think that it does make it a little bit more. I mean, in some ways it's going to make it easy on us, but in some ways it's a little bit more difficult to strategically decide. But really, I think it all comes down to utility infrastructure as far as where we're going to decide the most dense areas are like, and existing development.
Totally.
Are going to fall in there. And then the other is of like, I think just because, you know, there's the three-mile plan, doesn't mean that all edges of that three-mile need to be looking at, you know, substantial growth on all four sides of that, right? So it's identifying where does the whole community want to see that high density go and flow to? And then perhaps maybe that's where it moves is this direction and it hardly ever moves this direction.
Right.
You know, and I think that luckily in some ways for us, luckily, the utilities are going to command that for us a little bit as far as what we can plan on that three-mile plan and then as well as existing development. on that three mile plan, and then as well as existing development and existing, you know, obstacles such as the mining district.
Right.
You know, I think that some of it's like, some of it may help us.
There's some kind of natural barriers. There's a lot of natural barriers.
And I mean, three miles is kind of a lot in this community.
Right, it's a one size fits all tool, whether you're a five square mile city or a one square mile city, it's the same, which doesn't really make sense, but it's what we have. Yeah.
Oh, well, did we want to put the map back up and kind of talk about those?
So if I remember looking at it a couple of years ago, maybe I also put like the sewer infrastructure. One thing that's really interesting is that there's a bunch of areas that have really good utility connectivity that are not fully built out. And one is like that big, I think it's like two blocks up from you, Sarah, like those two blocks up on East Seventh.
Oh, right.
That like are still within city limits that I think are a really good spot. And then there's some like platted but never built on stuff like, uh, over by the cemetery, kind of where West Woods is going in. Is that right, Paul? Isn't there some stuff that kind of got platted out and there's, there's infrastructure nearby, kind of below Tabor Star and other places where there's like sewer infrastructure nearby, but it never really got built out?
Mountain Gate, and he was a subdivision, he just never finished it. And so now he is and selling those. And those are just, right, as a little guy. Then the, the thing I think you're talking about is the 40 acres on the backside of Matchless Estates.
Maybe that's what I'm talking about.
They are working on that, that's.
Okay, because I think that's like a good spot too. I mean, it's close in.
Yeah.
Right, but they got the sanitation, was the sanitation in the water, they, they did an anticipation of deliveries to.
That corner, because it's right at the end of Everfree Drive, basically. Um, yeah.
I just wondered if, Lori, would you, can, can you read out the legend there?
Yeah, can we just like kind of interpret it together for a minute? Or can we print a couple of copies, maybe? Is that hard to do? We're in real time? I like can't do like, some of them are like, it's a mask, it's just like.
This is Howard. I wish that we could all get our own copy of this, because it's been too hard to see it on the screen, of course. And I've not seen one yet, but if you can get copies out to the members of the BZ Board, I would appreciate it.
I have a copy in my office, but my office is totally spread, so.
Well, so on the, and I don't know, again, I mean, 2015, we haven't really talked about the three month plan a lot, and I was on the city planning commission at that time. So I don't know how.
It was just a circle.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how, so the, the designations are the green is the conservation and development, which is interesting. I don't.
What is that?
I'm not sure what that really means. And I don't know.
It is defined.
In the city or the county? So that, and then, so the green is the conservation development, the tan is developer essential. The blue gray is recreation and mining resource.
Yeah, I'm going to see you tomorrow.
You don't see one?
Okay.
Or you might have to stop sharing.
No, it's whoever J H R B is. Which they do have their names.
Where is that?
Who is J R H R, H J H R Bear? I'm sorry, can I, I think you just tried to answer. Who is J H R Bear?
For some reason, we can't hear them. Does anyone need more copies? Is all of copies? Up the lead is only part of it. It seems like it's only the west side.
Well, so what's, I mean, isn't this more than three miles? It's turquoise lakes plus than three miles.
I can, I mean, that's where, I can do that right now, actually.
I think it's supposed to be, Bryce, the way it's measured is from the outer city limits, like a bubble. Not from the center.
For, for ease.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I can do it from the edge, actually, so yeah, we're actually good.
Whereas you might see with some of the tools that Bryce and the layers that Bryce has developed, like you said, Heather, certain things, I mean, with, with, with infrastructure and Parkville's treatment plan is about 1.2 miles east of town. And they can only serve anyone downhill, right? So anything past that, up into the IM or outside on the adjacent zoning that they can actually serve would might not make it into a high priority of consideration for residential or commercial development.
Right, and doesn't that seem to go with your backcountry zoning purpose anyway?
Well, it does, our backcountry zoning doesn't address, like, nothing's allowed still in mining industrial.
Okay.
But that brings up a really good point that I guess I want to bring up too, when we're talking about the comp plan and the three mile plan, I think one really big thing that I keep feeling like is really difficult to keep a focus on, and perhaps maybe it's not going through a whole new comp plan, because that's a nightmare, but perhaps having one or two town hall meetings to see what does this community want? Because it's really easy to get focused on, we need affordable housing, so we need development, 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 but like, is that what we want? Do, does the?
A lot of people want it, and so you say it's here, they'll say, no, not here, here, no, not here.
Well, and I think that you become a community, like, we're only so big. So you can decide that every piece of it gets built out so that there's a chance for more people to live on it, or you can decide that this is all we got, this is going to be built on it, and this is going to be preserved for larger parcels or less density or more open space or more recreation. And I just, so I feel like the focus always ends up, where do we want development? Which is important, but I also think maybe even another bigger question is, where do we want to make sure we're preserving the whole reason we all live here, you know?
Exactly.
I totally agree. You know, the mantra of grow, grow, grow doesn't resonate with me. However, we need some.
Yeah, well, we don't have a choice.
But it's so hard, once you, once you open that gate, to, to draw the law, to, to close the gate back. And that's part of it, excuse me.
Yeah, I mean, I probably personally lean more towards, where do we want to like, keep it, you know, where do we want to slowly allow there to be more higher density and/or, you know, but, and where is it the most affordable so that we're gaining what our need is, right? And our need is to create workforce housing or what have you. So how do we create the incentive for that to happen, therefore allowing the zoning and the infrastructure availability to allow that? And then continuing to decide where we're going to have more of the like preservation of also still keeping Lake County, Lake County the best we can. I mean, we don't have a lot of control over all of it, but I just think there's, there, in, in, we're experiencing that a lot in almost every subdivision application we get is the majority of people are like, we don't want this here, we don't want this here, we don't want this here, you know, and it's like, that's all valid. I mean, I don't necessarily either. But we also, I also know that we can't not have it. So
Right.
It's, it's figuring out a balance the best we can, even though we're a little behind the ball. But I would like to make sure that we're always asking both questions, where do we not want it and where do we want it? Where is it okay that it's either developed or not?
Yeah.
How did you call it, it's ever happened in this city or any city, has always had people who didn't want it to happen.
Oh, for sure.
And, and it is just the nature of, of making, trying to make intelligent decisions, rather. Is that the right point? Is it, is it the right time for it? And then you just have to go forward.
But there's, there's a lot to be said about making sure your plan is your plan, because you can't also say no, just because you decided that one doesn't work there. If it's in the code that it's, we didn't plan it out correctly, then guess what? We have to allow that housing development to go in that's going to only sell $3 million houses, you know, and it is that what we actually wanted? I don't know. So I think that's where it gets important to.
Right, so a prime example of this is if we put the map back up, Lori, that where that Gateway Village application has come in and come and gone, coming and gone, I've no idea where it is now. At the junction of 91 and 24, that is in the plan as, in the three mile plan is developed residential. I don't know exactly what the description of developed residential is in this, like in terms of how developed, because there are some other areas that is like fairly low density.
Did he get approval for that right when this got, because I'm just wondering if that's why they called it developed.
Right, I don't know what that means.
He has gotten approval for Gateway years and years ago, and then never like.
Like the application, the two that I've seen in the last four years, they've been more mixed use applications.
Right.
You know, just as an example, they've more been mixed use. So do we as a community want that to be a mixed use? No, north of town? Or we really want it to be just residential? Like, that could be a really interesting question. You know, I would argue that it should be residential. We don't want to have our commercial businesses continue to draw further away from downtown. But like, if we had strong community feedback and a plan about that, then if an application came in that said for mixed use, we could say, no, we just had a community conversation about that. We really want that to be residential and we want it to be a mix of this type and this type and no more dense than 10 units acre or whatever, and have a little bit more clear direction for someone were to ever come back with an application for that. I'm just kicking on that because it's an easy example. But there's like 10 other examples, like around, if you just start going around the border, you know?
It's also like that brown zone, that reclamation, the redevelopment zone.
Yeah, what is reclamation, read it out?
I don't know, and I'm not quite sure what, what the status, so that is.
Do you remember, Sarah? No?
I mean, almost all of that land is owned by Resurrection, the sewer company.
Yeah.
Resurrection Sewer Company, really.
Would that, does that mean it would need like pretty heavy duty remediation in order to be?
Yeah.
That's an area that's been historically a smelter area for its entire existence.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's like a lot of CMC and county and well, yeah. Also, right?
Isn't it just the cream, I think, is the, the, next to that, the cream area, I think it's county, right?
The cream is the what?
Is what you're thinking the county stuff is? This stuff? And then the airport is the gray. You don't think it's the red?
CNC is in the red.
CNC is in the red.
Is it?
No. It's the brown.
It is?
Yeah. Or she works.
McCrory's coming around there against the.
You know, and a lot of this, uh, uh, cream color here says develop residential. Well, that's one house for 40 acres.
Is that what that category means?
Well, I mean, I've seen 40 acre parcels here that have a house on that. Which I think really is compared to develop residential.
For being that close in, so what is the?
The definition of present, or developed residential under the plan is it includes partially or completely built out subdivisions that are unlikely to change in the coming decades. This designation also includes all parcels that are not part of the former subdivision, but where the development pattern and level of buildup suggests that change to underlying land uses and development patterns is unlikely. Continue to work with partners to establish more bike and pedestrian trails and pathways for connectivity and recreation and develop residential. So I think a lot of this plan, at least that at 2015, was a little bit of defining what's there and not necessarily really taking heavy hand in imagining everything, every opportunity that could be. And that's, I think, basically what we all have to understand going into each conversation, if we dive down.
Right, I mean, because you could say that this little guy that owns this 40 acre parcel could someday send it out for development, but I think the idea of it being in that cream section is probably because utility infrastructure would make that really difficult for him to do that.
Yeah.
So then, looking at the purple, and I'm sure Bryce sees this also, it's like, there's not actually that many landowners.
Right.
Which is not that much land in general.
No, but that, but I think that's where you like say, like, okay, here's, here's where we want the density, and then you create incentives. Should the opportunity come, anybody look to subdivide, or you create a priority through the augmentation plan, or in combination with Parkville of saying, yes, we can actually do this, and we might allow for a different payment program because it is within this priority area.
Sure.
Yeah. That's, that's kind of the intensive or the the steering the ship in the direction that they want to go.
Yeah, Sarah, I think you're absolutely right, that that's the case. Because back in 2015, when this was done, we were not for a lot of people.
I think Bryce, the layers that Bryce is creating helps us figure out just exactly what in that three mile radius is where there is even opportunity.
Yeah, I'm gonna start, I'm starting to see a lot of.
This conversation.
It's, I started to see like, where the three mile plans are the identified stuff. It already matches up with code, it matches up with infrastructure, you know, so this is going to help us narrow it all down, especially once we get this and we can visualize it in the same map as the, you know, their other analysis I've done, so. Yeah. Yours, HMI. And so I don't know if you're aware of this, but Commissioner Vee, they mentioned this last week, is that CDOT has approached him about possibly starting a conversation of the junction 24 and 91, kind of re-envisioning that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and you know, like possibly putting a roundabout there or something like that. And he mentioned it as like a very preliminary conversation, but it is something we need to have. There's an awareness, I think that really plays into, CDOT, yeah, that plays into like the gateway development where it's like, you know, yeah, we create a mess with current infrastructure, but we have such limited land, it's already been identified as one that could possibly be developed already for mixed use. You know, my problem is that we can't just say every business has to be in the downtown core, because the downtown core is already built out. And so we're preventing, like the big R buildings, the only comparable building in the entire county that a business like that could go in. We don't have many other places where.
Well, there's going to be a ton of new businesses in rail yards, like there's how many commercial pads that are going to be?
Yeah, and I think that's a different kind, that's.
Right.
But I don't know if that's like the, the, the big commercial, it's very, you know, there's just not the room for even on no Rileys, you know, or, you know, something that's already there, we're just, we don't have many places in the county where those can even go. And so I think we need to be really careful when we're planning on.
Commissioner Feedler?
Oh yeah, I didn't mean to cut off discussion, just to, to add to, to what I heard from, from CDOT. So, and this is just very informal from them in terms of whether you get that kind of hard no pushback from them, but, but they were very encouraging. And, and by they, it's Mark, who is involved in the downtown restriping project a couple of years ago. You know, our traffic volumes in that stretch from the sort of Safeway parking lot out to the 9124 intersection that's currently striped for fourth travel lanes. You know, he, and you know, in, in their own words, they were like, it's kind of crazy that you go from two travel lanes on 91, open it up for three quarters of a mile, and then choke back down. You, you're not gaining any travel time benefit. All you're doing is creating a speedway while people are trying to turn off and merge on from all the businesses there. So they're amenable to at least thinking about, you know, essentially restriping and lowering the speed limit to what downtown looks like. So you would have to travel through lanes and those outer lanes would get restripped. Um, so you would have to travel through lanes and those outer lanes would get restripped. A- as pull off and merge in lanes for the businesses. Um, they also on their own work have started some design work on traffic circles. At ninety-one twenty-four and also the potential gateway to slow traffic coming down into town. So traffic exiting those circles would already be doing twenty-five. Um, if they're brave, um, you know, and um, you know, and then again, doesn't make sense to let people go back up. To forty. So anyway, again, a super preliminary. Um, but you know, at least, you know, compared to some other. You know, asks of CDOT and, you know, getting, you know, in. Interest and concurrence from them. Uh, seems, seems possible and. To me, I think, as, as it was said in the room, like with, with all that residential and mixed residential commercial coming in, you know, what, what, uh, what, what's the phrase again that was used to, you know, it's like. Commer- commercial, no, it's like a hi- highway commercial or something, and it's like. That's not really what that neighborhood is going to be in ten years. You know, it's going to be a neighborhood. And, you know, at least for me, you, you'd be interested to think about how do we not have like neighborhoods split by, you know. What's essentially right now, a forty-five mile an hour. You know. Highway. So that's.
Well, that's very cool. Thanks, Jeff, for that update.
So I just wanted to, I, I'm just kind of keeping a running list.
Yeah.
Everything you guys are talking about out plan, and so. I just wanted to revisit what I've had and did you continue on um. Or do you want to go to switch to different subjects? So so far I have Bryce is working on a better three mile mapping plan. Um, or at least the tools so that you can come in and, and go under stations and work together on a better three mile plan. Um, traffic plans are in works for traffic calming at the north end as well as more intentional traffic patterns. And some like there's overlapping goals on gateway design plans, um, maybe invite gateway or design guidelines. We talked about those either. Guidelines or. Plus the pro changes, um. Future land use mapping, that seems like that's an area that everybody must be really intentional about, about future uses. And then maybe the overlapping wildfire, water, public transit recreation. Awesome. Good takeaways. There's a lot, but. Just like some of the things inherent in that, whatever else she is with that case to make sure I'm catching everything.
Yeah, I think design guidelines is a big one also as far as the three mile plan. Just like. Because I think we have different sign codes and different, you know, and it just would be. I think there's been some. Things that have been done really well and some things that haven't been that we're trying to learn our lessons on as far as that goes, but we don't have really good design guidelines on the county side, so. That was another thing that was on our list, so that's a good point. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking uh for. Tonight's meeting, I suppose. I mean, this is a good, you know, start conversation, but perhaps uh each of the planning missions, just once Bryce has. A cool map for us, um. If you're down for that to ask, I guess. We could uh each take those and kind of have our own internal discussions and then I don't know if we want to from that say. Here's our priorities as far as we think. The colors are fine the way they are, but we want to talk about, you know. These specific things being the priority goals that are outlined in a more um. Narrative piece of the three mile plan, including things like design guidelines and. Some of the things in broader wildlife, or I'm sorry, wildfire and. All such, so in, and I guess taking into account the utility infrastructure and then we could. Hope to continue these kinds of meetings where maybe we have something that's just focused on three mile plan. Everybody will have had the maps and the conversations ahead of time and they'll leave some a little bit more organized conversation on that.
I li- I like that plan, Heather. Um, I think because the three mile plan is really a city tool. I wonder if there's a way that that could then inform. Any future land use plan changes that the county wants to do in the next year or two, like you were talking.
I think that would be the plan.
And then they end up kind of being a joint project, so three mile plan first. And then, and you know, we could kind of help coordinate any of those.
Because I think that even though it's not a requirement with the county, I think we could just, we could still add it as a tool in our comp plan probably as.
Yeah.
A reference point, you know, the legalities of that, but I would assume that we could add it as part of our.
Okay. I mean, realistically, I'm thinking this is kind of like a six month. Process. I don't know. Does that make sense? I'm trying to be.
Six months after that country.
Yeah, whenever you guys finish that, you can start the clock on the next project.
But at the same time, again, I think that other than the fact that we could get super in the weeds about design guidelines and super in the weeds about specific parcels and. You know, I think there's only so much. Due with this. I mean, I think because we are so uh restricted by the, the natural. Situation, I don't know that, I don't know that it will actually take a huge amount of time. Um, I think we could get super in the weeds about like the gateway parcel, for instance, what do we want to allow? We may not want to allow, but I think we can come to a pretty general consensus of. We'll consider this and then it depends on what the PUD looks like and maybe our, anything within the three mile plan is something where we ask for. Um, city feedback as a referral agency or whatever that looks like, right? And so I think that there's some ways that we can. Do that without getting super in the weeds about. That stuff.
I would really hope that, I'm, I'm really encouraged just to have this dialogue and actually hopefully have some good principles. Oh, I'm sorry.
Speaking of the microphone, Tuesday.
Who's technically, you're technically charging meeting, right? Go ahead, Chris.
Craig Schreiber, and I'm working in the private sector mostly, and so I haven't been out of the government. Uh, governing for quite a while. And I wanted to. Respond to this three mile plan. And what's your name, Scott?
Scott, yes.
Bryce, since it's been, it's been a while, I can't always keep up and uh. Some of the history in front of you guys, just things change. So I'm gonna just jump quickly to Airport Master Plan nineteen ninety-five. Six hundred and fifty acres of. Density study and engineering for roads and utilities. Everything from airports to dump. And from town around to wild adults. And so there's a. A map with projected densities all the way south, and that was. Originally to start some business development around the airport, constraint towns, out on county land. And there's a lot of residential and density numbers assigned to some big bubbles. That represent sewer quantities, road amounts and. Interface with the mineral belt trail. And that whole forest up south. Uh, I did submit PV for. Gateway Village with Evergreen Lane first and middle and stuff, so we have comments on highway commercial mixed with or. With residential in that area and the new sewer treatment plant that was uh. District that was approved there at that time. Ancient history. Um, I do have. All the land from the entire north side of Leadville from. What's called the Zeppelin properties or Columbine and Pizza Hut. All the way to Silver Hills. All the way to the river from existing. View, so there's new road, new high density in the old dump. And realignment of Mountain View Drive. Uh, directly into the new Walmart that's on the Zed property. Or, you know, who knows who's going to do that, but there's huge amounts of. Land that can be served by sewer gravity and. More pressure. Right contiguous there, so. Um, and then there's the Kendrick Parcels, there's all these other private developers that are. They come to me and wonder how much they can fit and what limitations of their land might be. And so I just wanted you all to know that there's some. Some cool, cool designs out there with trail networks leading through essential services with. Great new community recreation, school. And other things that are concentric to town. Road. That's, that's it.
Awesome, thank you. Um, there just have been some applications that have come up on some of these.
Yeah, yeah, in this area.
Design stuff has come up. And then there's some properties out here. People on their potential developer home properties.
So it's all in this, so.
She's coming along.
Yeah, it's very certain by new roads, I guess. We need to build a new access point.
Yeah, and not.
A quick, brought up a, a, a good point about, you know, the industrial park development, which you did, you see in there, the whole group so working on. Industrial park.
For the airport, yeah.
There's a huge lack of industrial. Anything's on industrial and we have. Constantly, I think sometimes we maybe have a few less zoning complaints if we had some kind of industrial storage. So there, we just don't really have. Just for future.
Right, well, agreed, because a lot of times we get applications at the city for some of these. Garage properties. That, you know, that are kind of in the transitional residential or mixed use areas that are right next to houses. We get a lot of concerns during those permit processes about chemicals or noises or fumes or whatever. And having a better location for that.
Yeah, it's.
Would be great.
For ever. It's actually one of the first reasons I got the planning machine was that one was trying to figure out how you could figure that out, because there are so many people. Um, excavating companies, welding shops, any of those construction crews, which by the way, we need here. That have to locate over in Eagle and Summit County because it's easier for them to find property that's zoned appropriately and or accessible for them. To be able to do it, so the airport park is a super great project and I hope. It's gaining some traction with those guys now. I know, like I said, the EDC, like, and so the EDC is working on it. Um, but I'm hopeful that we can get them for enough along to then get us involved in that conversation too, but. Because what's up there right now? Water, but it needs sewer still, I think.
Uh, yes, it needs sewer. There's also some issues with the actual airport boundary.
The title or something.
Yeah, and uh, so we just are trying to.
Yeah, so they were trying to iron those things out, I think, with the EDC, and then once they get it to that point. It'd be a little bit more of a real conversation, but. That could be a really big deal because that could open up. Pushing, you know, like, again, incentivizing those businesses that maybe you don't want downtown. Um, to a property, you know, like way back when, twenty years ago, when we were talking about that, it seemed like one, one idea was if the county developed that land. What if you, you know, created some really creative um options for people to be able to acquire that land affordably? Especially if they moved off of a place that maybe is more residential. And.
Right, and it opens that up for.
And it creates awareness that there's an industrial park up there, right? Because now to go to Coldfoot, you have to drive up here to the airport. What else is up there? You know, it's just like those kinds of ideas of trying to move. Move them and open up and, and make things in a little bit. More appropriate locations, but.
When we were doing your work, there was over all that. Wanted these services for the resorts that were kind of needing space.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a lot of potential for that. And again, just trying to keep our.
In a jail.
Our people, our locals working in town, that could be a great possibility for some of that, so.
Yeah, I share those concerns and I think one thing that keeps, I keep reminding myself of. Is that we need a commercial base because we can't have a town full of residences, I mean realistically, but also just. The tax base for commercial property is four times the amount of a residential, you know, dollar for dollar, so. It's an important part of the economic development as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've seen a lot of um applications over the years for that. Uh, southwest corner of town where kind of Roots RX and then the Two Doggy Daycares and the Big R, there's been a lot of interest in that area. Um, for that exact type of purpose, kind of light industrial. Kind of highway commercial mixes of, of that there, and I know there's even some pending applications there, so that's been. A really area, a hot area of interest. Um, for sure. Both in the city limits and then right outside the city limits too. It's, it's our highway commercial, yep. But then some people have come in, I feel like there's been interest for having residential there or mixed use where it could be. Both, and so. Right, and so one of the questions is, do we want to allow mixed use there? Do we really want to keep it just commercial? I don't know, because like you see this need for housing, but then I also say, okay, well, that's, you know. I don't want to preclude it from other commercial businesses as well.
I, I think, you know, to your point, I think we don't have very many areas for commercial development.
Right.
Re-zoning that commercial, I think, would, would be a mistake.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think it would be in everybody's best interest to put residential in the middle of a whole commercial. Uh, zone, that's just.
Right, but there's just been a ton of interest, so it's, we have to wrestle with it, yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of like question because. You do something like the rail yards is doing up front, or you have commercial down below, but then you create residential on top, that's like one of the best.
Yeah.
Models out there for creating housing, so if you create, you know, but it's. So I don't know about eliminating residential, but maybe if it's just. That the idea is that it's commercial, if an application came for development, it's. The development is like, ah, sorry, guys, we don't think this is a good fit for its location. I think you can do that based on.
Right.
But.
That would be a good time to uh, establish the uh. To rec center, pool, work center site.
Wasn't the justice center site been chosen? Yeah. Well, you can all come to our, I'm gonna segue, you can all come to the Parks, Rec and Open Space Open House on November ninth and. Choose your favorite location for a combined rec center, pool, et cetera.
What time is it?
Five thirty, seven thirty. It's a drop in, you know, you can come with. But I think if that site is chosen to some degree. That could help organize some of these thoughts as well.
Okay, I'm getting the press corps, can you say, I want to just present this map really quick.
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, we should, I, because it's on the screen.
Keep moving too, I mean.
So I'll just, I just want to point out where it is because I think there's. I'm going to be doing some work this week to make it better, to make it align with these other mapping products we have. But this was just an analysis I did. To kind of show eligible county parcels for major subdivisions, so just so that anyone can look and buy zone, these are your parcels that are eligible. Based on zone districts, so there's just a bunch of different layers on this map, I can send a link. So if you'd like it, I'm going to be adding more like the comp plan layers, which will be really helpful. I added a three mile buffer onto this, which is kind of interesting to see how big that three mile buffer is, covers a large portion of county. So that's why this is a little bit zoomed in.
Yeah.
But it covers the majority of the relevant parcels, it looks like anyway, so. Um, three mile buffer, a really good. I, I was asked to put some partner owned parcels on there. Climax School District Hospital, you know, people that maybe be amenable to affordable housing. Project on their land. Parkville and Leadville Sand are on there as well. I need to add the Leadville Sanitation. Apparently that's an old shape file and it's not representative of how their district is now, so I'm going to update that as well. You have the water augmentation plan, which is kind of interesting to see. And there's also. A list of. You know, zone or parcels that are within that augmentation plan, because that is something that's unique. We have water constraints because of Parkville, but this augmentation plan opens up a whole new. Conversation and consideration, so. And then there's also just the things like. You know, county owned parcels that the county already owns that are eligible for major subdivisions, so. If the county is looking for some sort of a land incentive or, you know, to sell something on the market. Um. And then as well as there's like CBW managed lands and conservation lands on it as well, so. Just trying to incorporate all these things we discussed into one map so that it can be visualized at the same time. And that's why I'm really excited to. Be able to get this data. I talked to RPI. He said. He said, I mean, kind of like you were saying there, like, they just didn't have the same GIS technology when this was created, which is why we never got the data. So he asked to kind of go back and find it, so I should be Well, he did say he, it's just gonna be a process that, so by the end of this week is kind of our goal, I want to get that, for him to dig it up, but I'm excited for what that is and what that brings and
Do you have a layer of sewer water lines?
Sewer and water lines? I believe I can look for the water, I don't have the sewer lines, but I will add them. Unless you have the GIS data, if you have any GIS data from your work back in the past.
The sewer lines?
We do, yeah, and so
I mean, I have a different collection.
I haven't found that in my, like, treasure trove data I got when I started the job, so I'm probably just gonna re-digitize it, but anyways, this is just a really good kind of base to build on. We built it for one set of considerations, which is just purely what parcels are eligible for subdivision. And then now we're adding on other considerations, we can add on terrain as well.
That's awesome, thank you. That's layers that you can play with.
Well, if you guys want, I want to make sure there's room for you to continue to talk about backcountry zoning, I know it's on your agenda.
Yeah, I think he was just doing sharing his math stuff, so to recap on city county stuff. You know, I think that we're, we're probably a little bit booked with applications in that country between now and end of the year. So we probably can't do, add either of these comp plan or three mile plan to our agenda right away, but we'll definitely over for the end to make sure it's on there for when we can sneak it in, and then if maybe we could have another one of these meetings.
January.
The beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we can kind of, if we decide, maybe if it's you and I, we come together and decide an agenda for the, that meeting, whether it's just three mile plan or
Okay.
specific talking points.
We can map out some steps.
I would like to say that I would like to want this topic, so the topic is tightly and pretty critical, because in twenty fifteen, I don't think we really knew what we're doing, I mean, I, you know, we had an idea, but I think we really have to think, what do we want the future of our community to look like? And I'm not sure this actually reflects it right this way.
Right, right. But also timing, timing is so, you can't predict the future, like, I did Fruta's city plan, and their last one was two thousand nine, and they had doubled their population over a decade. And they were planning to double again, and then the recession hit, and they added maybe a thousand residents over the next ten years. And so their plan was totally meaningless, and their three mile boundary, because they were planning for ten times the amount of growth they actually got. So it was like a readjustment of like, okay, let's how much are we actually gonna grow, you know? So I think this is, we're kind of in a similar situation here, where we didn't anticipate growth, or it was the opposite situation. We didn't anticipate growth, and now we're in twenty twenty one, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of growth pressure.
But it's actually because the city can't grow very much.
Right, but we have the pressure, so we need a
Community vision
Yeah.
Of this conference, not a city or county. Because I think, I don't know if anybody's seen the census numbers, our census in twenty ten was two thousand six hundred and thirty and twenty twenty, two thousand six hundred and thirty.
What about the county? Did the county grow? I haven't worked. How much?
A little bit better than that percent.
But, you know, it's funny, or maybe not funny, but what's interesting about that to me is, is exactly that, that it, it's this whole state is growing faster than, I mean, I think we're the new California, right? And so we have to decide, are we gonna let it keep growing with, because there's development pressure, like burst it to the seams, and if so, fine, but let's figure out where it's gonna burst to those seams, but I think it's my guess that moving forward, we will never be relieved of that development pressure from here forth.
Right.
We will always have it, I think, being a really cool small mountain town in Colorado and one of the best proximities to everything, I think we're, we're in this now, it to look like this for the long time, long haul. And how much and how, you know, how much we allow that growth, even though there's tons of pressure for other people who want to live here or move here or do all the things, like I think this is the time where you decide how big you want to be.
Yeah, decide where we're gonna build the wall.
Right, I would definitely agree with that, but I think how we grow and the smart, like, smart policies, and then also trying to continue to be as equitable and inclusive as we can as we grow. You know, it's really easy to stop growth, and then you have the haves and the have nots, and I really would be worried if we kind of go in that direction, so it just, it's a lot of work to try to grow in a way that that most people feel like is going in a good way, I guess.
Yeah, I think it is. In, in the equitable part, it's really tough in our community, because we are such a bedroom community. And so the, the beneficiaries of our locals are the employee, employers and Summit County counties for the most part. We're not able to, to use that to help create the supportable housing for for making that equitable growth, and so I think that's also gotta be part of the hard conversations of you know, do, do we identify some of these areas as being areas where we are doing planned growth with those two communities to be like, hey, we love our community members that work in your counties, however, you need to help us house them.
I'm kind of shocked they haven't been like
They would not have more.
But that was two or three years ago.
But I heard that's changed.
I know, I wonder if the conditions have changed enough that they are not
As we go down that road, we can, we can invite them to participate, but if they don't, then, then we have nothing for them.
Right.
Well, but so here's like a three, and I think Anne has the part, the part of that three mile plan is again, like, deciding together what we want and how we get, how we incentivize it, and the common language around what we're doing, and if there's a program or a priority to point a partner to, then it makes it a lot easier maybe for neighboring counties to contribute and, and pay a price. And I think we're, I mean, I think we've, we've gotten some counties that have directed some interested developers to Lake County, because they don't have so they're, they're not necessarily attracting or doing business with folks to by any means, right? They're, they're pushing folks towards Lake County. I don't know how much more fear is, we might see that, but what were you gonna say, Anne?
No, I, I think just the same, I think maybe there's been a little bit of a change in climate, it's just that it's what we're hearing is that the Summit Commissioners, Summit County Commissioners are very aggressive and looking for opportunities to partner. We've even had people at, at the development table with us say, we are clear because the board said, the, the, the Summit County Board said, hey, you gotta open these parcels in, in my county, because they may be really good for first housing projects, and, and we need something we would want to give back behind them, and then of course, that's just some very things, but we've heard some, maybe a little bit of change in the climate, so that's kind of exciting.
That's nice to hear, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that could be great, and I think that's a big piece of the deed restriction conversation that needs to be had is we can have some where it's focused all around income, but maybe at the end of the day, it's just all about workforce. So if Lake County is the one footing the bill, then the deed restriction is that you have to be a full-time Lake County employee. And then if Summit County wants to help put, puts, you know, put some money on the table for infrastructure, we can have, you can be a full-time Summit County employee, you know, I just think that sometimes we get so caught up in the income numbers, and at the end of the day, we're just looking to house our employees, and some of them make fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year, because like with that, I've worked with so many couples from Summit County who can't buy anything in their inclusionary zoning districts, there's tons of openings in their rentals down there, and in a couple of their housing projects down there. Because they're the middle.
They make too much.
And they, so they make too much to live in those, and then they make too little to buy something here. And so there's just like nothing I can do, so they're renting tiny little condos in Summit County for three thousand dollars a month. You know, and so to me, I, I, just because of my experience that way, I steer away from income levels so much as I do work out of course, because at the end of the day, I just want to make sure everybody has places for their employees to, to live, and I know that's, it can't be as simple as that, but I think that's another piece of that conversation. But it would be nice if Summit County is willing to come to the table, and I think if we started developing projects that were very Lake County specific, it would be much more incentive for them to come to the table than well, hey, wait a minute, we want some of those units for us, I think then there's, there's a, a better way to, you know, it's an easier ask for them to to put some money where their mouth is, so. Could be interesting conversations moving forward, for sure. So, January.
Sounds good again. Yeah.
And if we have anything new and exciting that comes up in the meantime, we'll just be in touch.
I think Well, we are missing, we have one, two, three, Rod is here, Rod came from the slate. That's all we have, and Morgan, Morgan's not here tonight. Right now, we're at four. And Alex isn't here tonight, sorry, because he's missed a couple.
Yeah.
So we have, we have five. And then we have an application, hopefully we'll get a six.
I probably could use a new list of landing issues.
Okay. Lori, can you send Paul then updated list?
Do we want to talk about dates in January, or do we go for that?
Let's leave it open till when you guys finish backcountry.
And we're meeting, last comment, we're meeting again on Wednesday. And we're gonna have a joint meeting with the new police chief to talk about some code enforcement stuff specifically. Did we hire someone, or we still, still out there for?
We have two code officers. One of them, the second one, is going to go to the academy in January.
Okay.
Police academy, so, so the time be, we still good, good.
Okay, so that's another thing we're working on too, is kind of getting on, on Wednesday, so if you want to come to that, Paul, here's your
Six P M.
Yeah, we just want to get on the same page with him. And there's a formula business ordinance that we're gonna review.
It's also on Zoom.
Is that, that's, that is, that's an all Zoom meeting, right? I think that's an all Zoom, or it's in person? Okay, in person, sorry. We've gone back and forth so many times, I can't keep track of it.
We're hoping this one in person.
Okay.
We were always gonna have like that option.
Well, now that we have this figured out, I think we can do that.
We do still have the Zoom, I already put the Zoom out on the agenda for Wednesday meetings, so you have those options.
Right. So thank you so much for having us, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for hosting us. That moves us down to the backcountry zone final draft, and I'll let Anne take the lead on where we're at with code language and stuff.
Chris Lloyd, and she's but she's hoping to have final revisions and anything to us maybe within a week. And so in time for our next, if you look at the calendar, our next regular meeting will be November eighth. So my thought was to kind of look at the calendar and see if kind of this was a realistic approach to planning the town halls, the actual public hearing for the code amendment, and enough time to get our permit and journals ready to send to the company that's wanting to be around for us. So this, this contemplates that at our next meeting, we would look at the revisions to the code and less the code. Keeping in mind that if it still had a few more revisions to it, I, I think we should still move forward with the noticing and the publishing. Because the following, with the thought that we would have, even if we say it's draft, I mean, we have information and resources available through the flyer and on our website. If the actual language isn't a hundred percent dialed in, I think that we've got it far enough along that I can't imagine that's gonna be by, at least by next week, we would know if there's any heavy revisions. So, I would think that my next, our next regular meeting on the November eighth is to look at the code, and then, and new potential revisions, and the other half of the meeting, we do not have any applications that we're carrying, so hopefully the other part of the meeting, we can just make sure that we feel really good about the written notices that are gonna go out and the informational piece. We can prepare and share with you what we've got for the website. And just everything in preparation for the week of the fifteenth to the twentieth, by the nineteenth, that's when I would have the newspaper, that that we would, we would want to make sure we've got our written and published notice sent. Also contemplating having a public notice, notice run for two consecutive weeks. And so it's in there twice typically, the only one at once, but since this is a very big code amendment, I'm not having it in the newspaper at least twice, if not maybe three times before the town hall, hosting a town hall on the thirteenth, and then the public hearing on the tenth. The only other thing that I kind of wanted to highlight in here, first to see if all of that seems reasonable. And then, are, we have two regular meetings that we typically don't traditionally have, and that'll be in the November twenty second. And then December, December meeting on the twenty seventh. So, those are both ties that typically don't have any, our regular meetings, we, we don't hold because of the holidays. So the only other date that I would, would offer is maybe the potential for extra kind of preparatory to the town hall, to the town hall on the thirteenth. Maybe just one extra meeting day in there somewhere in that first full meeting in December. To make up for those other two meetings that will kind of lose due to the season, holiday season, in case you think there's any benefit in meeting and getting together before we conduct a town hall. In case anyone else could flesh out any other last questions, or, you know, just kind of in preparation for that. So, just wondering what everyone thinks of this schedule, and then if you think we need to tweak it, modify it, and, and if there's any merit in adding maybe one extra meeting in December. Although it's December, so that might be very hard to do.
I think it makes sense, though. But my own schedule, I would need it to be that first week of December, either November thirtieth or the first through the fourth, but I don't know what that looks like for others.
I will, I will be here the first week of December. So I would miss it, December sixth meeting, I guess I could tune in now on Zoom. But I, I think, just given what we're doing, kind of wrapping up one bit of business and schedule makes sense to me. You have the public chance to mull it over, over the Christmas holiday.
You'd be gone on November thirtieth?
No, leaving, December first, actually, so I am on November thirtieth.
What does November thirtieth look for, like, for others? I know it's the Monday after Thanksgiving, but you should be fat and happy by then, so.
Is that the twenty ninth, you mean, the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at this wrong, twenty ninth.
Okay.
I'm free.
I'm free.
Truth is for you.
Does that work okay for you?
Yeah, yeah.
So we, instead of doing the twenty second, we would do the twenty ninth?
That sounds, sounds good to me.
And would that be a hybrid, or would just be virtual and in person?
I anticipate it'll probably be just virtual, we haven't, we're not, haven't been set up yet to do hybrids at the county yet, so I, I anticipate unless something changes, and all of these will be remote dates.
Including the town hall and
The town hall, and unless, I will The town hall, I mean, unless, I will, you know, I think, I think just have to tentatively, you know, absolutely go to the Zoom, but tentatively we might have a live option or a hybrid option. Maybe we could look at the city's calendar and see that meeting space is so much easier to accommodate a hybrid than I think our spaces right now. So, but I can definitely work on those logistics and just kind of see, you know, where we're at. When we get a little closer, like the week before, when I would send out, actually, I would actually want to know that town hall probably by the very first of December, just make sure everybody has enough time. But if it's, if it's live and remote, it seems like generally it'd be very accessible to everyone.
God, Monday, the thirteenth, December, that's part of the town hall.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be open, you can use.
I apologize if you guys have already determined this, but the format of that town hall, is it kind of a public comment? Or?
We have not decided on that and I think that's why the discussion, both on the eighth and the twenty ninth will be so necessary to decide exactly how we want to plan that out.
I would, yeah, I would think the eighth, just so that you know, we can prep residents well in advance for kind of what they should expect.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think that would be really good. I think that maybe it would be a kind of right taking public comment on any application a bit, but also probably a little bit of a presentation and kind of highlighting of the code is.
Yeah, I think we'll start out probably with a presentation that kind of expands a little bit more than the informational fire. Can expand why we're doing it, what are thought processes behind it, really try to answer a lot of the main concern questions with our presentation and then go to public question, Q and A session. Just off the top of my head of an idea. What time do we have that, are we thinking that would be?
On the town hall, and does it make sense to have it a little later in the evening than to, you know, do our regular four o'clock for the town hall?
Yeah, do we don't want to do five, do we want to do six o'clock? What are we thinking makes the most sense for?
For example, yeah. I think six is probably the best, but perhaps participation.
I agree on six, the way you get, you get people there that might be working late.
Okay, I like it.
Great, I will make a note that we are adding a meeting then, a preparatory meeting on November twenty ninth. And we are going to look at the town hall on at six o'clock for best attendance.
Great. Would you like me to go ahead and reserve county chambers for you or do you want to have the money later or do we go ahead and reserve it?
Yeah, we would love to reserve it.
That'd be great.
This is a great space, especially if we have a lot of public events, it's easier to accommodate that here, so thank you.
For preparing for the eighth, I mean, I know that we're, we're looking at Christopher Legal Review. The flyer, I really, really need feedback on from you guys on the flyer. And if I need to resend that, just let me know, happy to get it resent out. Just trying to add as many questions as we can think of, that we're just gonna question and answer it, question and answer it. And I think there were some in there that I was reading that Erin and I came up with, and I think are a little confusing, the ones we already did, so. Reworking some of those, but it would be super helpful if we had some of that done. And then I could, I could bring that on the eighth and we can find to that even more, but I think that needs to be done on the eighth also. So that we can have it ready for final tweaks that week after for publishing it, because we want to send that out, we're mailing that next following week.
Hey folks, this is Chris. I just, I wanted to chime in real quick and let y'all know, we, we have done an initial review of the materials answered over. I don't see any major issues with it at this point. We're just in the process of kind of suggesting some tweaks to the, the language primarily for clarity and stuff. So I, I don't anticipate any issue with us getting her those comments this week, so we shouldn't further delay this for legal.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Heather, it looks like you sent it on the twenty first of September, is that the the one we referred to?
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just trying to find it to send it right back out to.
Thank you. But otherwise, I feel like we could pull that off. I think that looks like a great timeline.
I agree, especially since we're getting inquiries about helipads.
Right, did you read that?
Yeah, I did.
I was talking to Anna and I was like, wow, you can't make that up.
No, I know.
And she was.
That was a joke at first. I was like this, but nope.
No, no. I fielded several like smaller call, smaller inquiries like that, like to a lesser degree, but she wanted all the things. I was like, oh, God.
That's right, and, and VRV.
And VRV at the same time, that'd be great.
I want an infinity pool at thirteen thousand feet, why not?
Maybe you can jump off the helicopter ladder into it.
Yeah.
Man, oh, man. Well, thanks. I think this was productive. Does anybody have anything else?
I just sent the flyer out to everybody again, just so that you have it, so.
Thank you.
All right, sweet. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn this meeting.
I think. I think Abby seconded. All right, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Bye.